It is now 5:02, recording has started. And I want to welcome everybody to the Thursday, February 24th, 2022 Public Arts Commission meeting. John, would you check and see if we have a call, please?
Yep, I will do a roll call. Chair Waldman. Chair Waldman is here. Vice Chair King.
I'm here, I'm in a car.
Commissioner Corrigan. Is not here, she was here earlier.
She was here a little earlier. She was on board.
Yep. Commissioner Couture.
Present.
Commissioner Janjigian.
Present.
Commissioner Moore is absent and looks like Commissioner Corrigan.
Sorry, I'm late.
There you are. So we have five of the commissioners present.
Okay, so we have.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I just, I'm a guest, so I just wanted to say hi. myself, I'm on a task and I'm actually. I applied to get onto the commission. Wanted to. Call in and see what y'all talk about, but I'll shut up now and.
Okay, so our job is to try and scare you. And on that, are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Looks like we have at least one other person who's called in who is not a commissioner. I see a hand raised. Janine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Should I turn on my video or should I keep it off? I'm not sure, other commissions don't like video on.
John, do you have a preference?
I do not at all.
Okay, well then, I'll let you.
If you're not comfortable with it off, that's fine.
Okay. I, I'm fine turning it on. I just want to make a brief comment, which is, you know, I'm. I'm supportive of the, the dog parks going in at McKenzie, but I do recognize that there's a sculpture. Right there, and so I didn't know if. The. The Arts Commission, you know, has discussed that. I noticed it was not on the agenda to the extent that either fencing should go, should avoid it, or the sculpture should be moved. Certainly can, cannot dream of a situation where the sculpture would be inside the fenced dog park. But obviously that's up to the commission. So I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
No, that, that's helpful. John, are you allowed to comment on that? Or do you know if, if the sculpture is within the area that they want to fence?
I don't believe it's within the area that they're planning to fence, but I can check with staff and see what the plans are. But I believe it's outside, it's outside of where the, the park is planned to go.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, and John, I'll double check on that and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Going once, going twice, all right? We'll go back to the agenda and the first item of business is meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was all the way back January 27th. As everyone had a chance to look at the meeting minutes. And I believe what we need to do is make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as they.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes. Hillary, you made a motion?
Make a motion to. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 27th.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and second that. John, you want to.
Okay. Yep, I will do a roll call. Chair Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Couture. Looks like Commissioner Couture is away from her computer. Commissioner Janjigian.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero with one. If you'll indulge me, I will go back to the roll call vote. Commissioner Couture, there was a motion made to approve the minutes and we are going through the. The, the motion, the, the roll call. So I'll call Commissioner Couture.
You're, you're unmute.
Terry, you're unmuted, Terry.
You want to just give a thumbs up or down, would that be okay, John?
The mute is in a different spot. I approve it, thank you, I apologize.
Great, the, the motion passes five to zero.
All right. John, is it all right for me to ask? Last time we went through the meeting and before each item, I asked if there were public comment. We do have people from the public visiting our meeting. Should I call that out or should I ask the, our two visitors, our two members of the public if they have any comments before I go through the, the rest of the agenda?
So on each item, we should offer an opportunity for the public to speak.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm looking down, I'm reading off the printed paper here. Item number two is the Alegria donation before we discuss it and get an update from John on it. I'm wondering if there's any comments from the public. Nope, no comments on item two. John, do you want to give us an update on this?
Sure. As indicated in the, the staff report, the artist for the Alegria sculpture, which is the one in Village Park. It's sort of in the center of the park there. That sculpture has been on loan to the city for a few years and the artist has indicated that he'd like to donate it to the city. And so per the, the policy for donation of artwork. You as the commission will have an opportunity to discuss and. Decide to either recommend to the city council that the city accept the sculpture or. Take, you know, not recommend it and so therefore it would not, it wouldn't go to the city council for exception. And would go back to the artist.
And, and just for some background for, oh, sorry, Hillary.
Not I, no.
Okay, I was just going to add a bit of background for members of the public that the artist is also the same artist that brought us Cosmic Bliss, which is our new piece that came in, I believe, last Thursday. Is there an official name for that park, John?
No, it's not, it's just, it's just a green space.
Okay, it's on the corner of. Springer and El Monte. So I'll open it up for discussion if anyone has anything to say about accepting Alegria or not accepting Alegria.
I'm in favor of it, I like Alegria.
I just have a quick question, which is, are there any restrictions if we accept the donation? Do we completely own it? Does the city completely own it?
Yes, yes.
So any maintenance issues fall under city jurisdiction?
Okay.
Yep.
And maybe it's a question, I don't remember on the. Review, I think it was last meeting of all the maintenance issues. I think that one needs a little bit of a power wash at some point, but that's, I think, the only problem with that particular piece.
That's correct, I have my notes in front of me.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And I know for myself, I get stuck on Edith in traffic, waiting to make a left on San Antonio, and I, I like that piece. It's a little pop of color and when we have wind, it moves. I, I think it's a fun piece and I agree with Hillary, I would recommend that we accept it, but. You know, if there's somebody who feels different, they should feel free to speak up.
I agree, I like it, it's also generous of the artist, so I, we'd like to accept it and not tell them we don't want it. It's, it's a sculpture.
And maybe one other tidbit, and John can correct me if I'm wrong. Prior to that piece being in Village Park, we had another piece by the same artist and I don't recall the name of the piece, but, but it's the second piece he's had in that park.
That's correct.
He also has very nice constitution and character. He's a great guy.
He's a nice guy and I sent him a email thanking him for bringing Cosmic Bliss and I also sent him. The electronic version of the cover of the town prior so he could see he made the front page, so I think he was very excited by that.
Well, I make a motion to accept it.
All right.
If no one else will make a motion, I make a motion that we recommend the city accept the donation of Alegria.
Okay.
Second.
John, you want to go ahead and do a roll call on that?
Yep. Okay, Chair Waldman.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes, from I5.
Commissioner Corrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Couture.
Yes.
And Commissioner Janjigian.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Yay.
So for next steps, I will, I will put together a, a very short staff report to get it onto the city council's agenda just as soon as I can. With the commission's recommendation.
And for newer members of the commission at that point, should, at least one of us should be in attendance in case there's any questions from the city council, correct?
It would be helpful. I mean, I, I would hope that there won't be any questions, but it would be helpful to have somebody there in case.
And would it go on the consent calendar?
Normally I'm at every city council meeting, so just make sure I know.
Okay. I don't believe I'll be able to get it on for the March 8th, so it'll probably be the March 22nd council meeting.
Yep.
And, and as. And as Chair Waldman was indicating, it will, it will most likely be a consent calendar item, so it'll probably, as long as it stays on the consent calendar, it'll be very early in the meeting.
Okay, good deal.
And it will stay in its place, that will be its permanent home where it is now?
Yes, and, and until the, the commission has a recommendation or a desire to move it, but yes, it'll stay where it is.
Lovely, thank you.
Item number four, Midnight Stomp series, and before we discuss this.
Monica, did you want to skip number three or did you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do number three.
Mother hen, my poor mother hen, it's my mother hen, it's one of my favorites, okay. I stand corrected, thank you. Item number three, Mother Hen location, so I took it upon myself before, actually before I discuss this, I should double check if there's any comments from the public on Mother Hen. We have purchased it back in December 2021 and it is in downtown and it's in front of Fau cabin. And right now, the outdoor dining for that restaurant is banging up against poor Mother Hen, so the thought was we should move it. So any comments from the public as far as possible relocation? Nope, okay. Um, so I'll go ahead and, and start as I took myself as the subcommittee of one to look at Mother Hen and if possible. Relocation, my cat is climbing and about to knock stuff over. I went over and I spoke to the folks in the restaurant and they love that piece, they love having it there, it brings attention to the restaurant. They asked, well, is it the tables, are they in the way? I said, yes, they're in the way. Spoke to people outside the restaurant and they said someone just took a selfie with the piece, please don't move it. And I'm wondering if we can just move it back a, a little bit and keep it in its current location and perhaps. Move it slightly so the back end of Mother Hen is not facing the street. And one reason I bring this up is I know city staff is stretched really tight and I'm about to make sure my cat doesn't knock something over here. And I know we're having a lot of sculpt, new sculptures come in, so we're asking a lot of city staff as far as installing pieces. And if we can make their lives a little bit easier at another time, we might decide to move it somewhere else, but. I think at this point, I'm okay with just repositioning it, maybe moving it back six inches, eight inches a foot and. You know, keeping it where it is.
Would that solve the problem, Monica? Is that enough or would signage solve a problem or do we need to physically move it, do you think?
I, I think we have to physically move it slightly and I. I'm afraid that people, or here's my cat, people are moving the, I don't know if it's the restaurant moving the tables or outside diners moving the table and. You know, we all have moments where we move things in, in stores and restaurants and we're kind of oblivious and I think people are just moving those tables. And smacking into it where it is, so if, if we can move it back slightly and, and maybe as a subcommittee is of one, John, you and I can work on, on going out there and. Ensuring that. A slight movement or on the other side closer to the intersection.
Yeah, would you, I was going to ask if you'd like me to, would you like me to share the street view of it so people can kind of see what you're envisioning?
Yes.
Yeah. And I think, I think Monica, we want to make sure that it's still positioned so people can do selfies with it, right? I mean, we want to make sure that it's still.
Yeah, and that would imply that the majority, you know, that it's still facing the businesses. But we also have comments about the backside of the chicken facing the street as well, so if we can find a delicate balance.
Well, it's got a, yeah, that's gonna be the hard balance.
Yeah, the chicken has two sides to it.
So.
Right, yeah.
So Hillary, just for a little background here, John is showing the street view of Mother Hen.
Yeah, I can see it, yeah.
Yeah, so the way you're speaking is that it's not bolted, right?
It, it is, but we could, we could remove the bolts and, and what Chair Waldman is talking about is sort of, you see, there's the extra space on the concrete.
Right.
Moving, moving, moving it back towards this side over here.
Okay. Yeah, because when you said move it, I figured how, you know, if it's vaulted, but you can move the, the base.
Yeah.
You can move on the base.
Round base is part of the sculpture, but we can move it on the, the pad.
Right.
Slightly backwards.
Right.
And the picture that John is showing right now, looks like it was taken prior to the outdoor seating that happened with COVID. I think the restaurant always had outdoor seating, but they've got a lot more now, so.
How about if you just turn it around, it would be. Bring that.
Then it would be, you mean with the face facing the street or?
Yeah, if you turn it around. So that.
Sorry, go, go on Lucy.
No, I was just going to say if you turn it all the way around, then it would be on the right, on the correct side. But it would be facing the opposite side. Now.
I, I'm thinking maybe turning it like 20, 15, 20 degrees maybe, but.
Maybe re, I think, maybe rebalting is the answer.
And I think worst cases, we just, i- i- if we can actually move it back a, a little bit, that way it's still facing. The businesses and as Hillary said, it still allows people who are walking.
Right.
Or I want to take a selfie, they can still do it, so.
Okay, I was trying to make it a little easier.
But I, I, I would like it moved back just a bit, just because those, those tables keep hitting it and now that it's actually city owned. We would prefer that the mosaic pieces not get smashed, so.
Right, right.
So for Mother Hen's protection. Do we need to make a, a motion in order to. To do this, John, or should you and I go back out there and just double check it's doable and bring this back to the next meeting?
I think, well, I think it's doable. And so I think if, if the commission wants to, to move it back a little bit, I would, I would suggest a motion just. Approving relocating it, well, do we even need a motion? You know, a motion would be, would be nice, just a motion approving, moving it back on its existing pad. So it's further away from the sidewalk.
Okay, well, I'll, as, as the subcommittee of one, I will make a motion.
Anita's hand is up, Anita's hand is up.
Oh, Anita, yes.
Um, just a quick question, is there any identification on that thing anywhere about the name or the artist?
I believe.
I have that. Yeah, there, hang on, I have that note, just a minute.
I'm just wondering if you move it back a little bit, the concrete is still going to abut the sidewalk. And there's going to be still a temptation for people to shove tables or chairs as long as there's concrete, they'll put the corner of a something on there. If there is a sign and you put the sign kind of in the way of where somebody can try to put a corner of a. A chair leg, it might help protect it. But I don't, I, you know, I'm down there all the time and I've just never paid any attention to whether there's a sign.
There is, there is a plaque, but there's no sign that says don't touch and no sign is going to stop people from touching it.
No, I'm not talking about the touching, I'm talking about the fact that if you move it, the concrete pad still abuts the sidewalk. And people will still turn cat, the, the chair cattywampus and scrunch it onto the edge of the, the, the base.
So the interesting thing about the pad that it's sitting on, I didn't even realize it was on a pad because it's, so the mosaic piece sits on a round mosaic base. And that's all you can see, you can't see the pad underneath because the. Redwood bark shavings that are there cover the entire pad.
Ah, okay.
So it's camouflaged. So I hear what you're saying because if you, if you give someone an inch, they'll take a foot, right? Restaurant will say, oh, more, more pad for us to, to, more concrete for us to push our tables on. But my thinking is that perhaps the redwood bark will protect us from that.
Got it. John was scared. Quiet now.
No, no, not at all. I tend to agree.
Why don't we try moving it and if it's still a problem, then we can kind of go to the next step, but I think if we can, if the, if the redwood chips will kind of prevent. The, this vacuum from happening, then maybe that will be the solution, but why don't we try it? And if we do have to kind of go further and put up a, give Mother Hen or space, we can go to that next, but I think let's, let's try and see if this will work. I mean, it's nice to have a problem that can be relatively easily solved, so let's try it.
Yeah, this might be our easiest one yet.
Yes. Can I make a motion for somebody else?
Oh, wait, Anita's got her hand up, Anita, yes? Anita?
That may, that may have been from earlier.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move Martha Hen a little bit further away from the sidewalk. At the discretion of whoever and John, if, if whichever of us commission people are there with John to make it a little less.
Tempting, tempting. All right, I'll second that. John, you want to do a roll call?
I will. And we're going to do it different. Commissioner Janjigian.
Yes.
Commissioner Couture.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corrigan.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
And Chair Waldman.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, and John. You will, do you need me as the subcommittee of one to join, either you or the maintenance folks when it gets moved? Or do you just open it up to whatever, whoever from the commission can make it?
However you would like. We can make sure we schedule it a time that you can be there. Or if another commissioner wants to be there, we can schedule it then as well.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with whenever I, I can go out there and then if for some reason it can't be moved, then it, then we'll put it back on the agenda. And hopefully that will not happen. Okay. To the item that I jumped to by mistake, the Midnight Stomp series, before we discuss it, any comments from the public? Nope, okay, John, take it away on the Midnight Stomp series.
Sure, and, and just very briefly, the reason I, I put this on the agenda was. Perhaps a bit of confusion on my part, more than anything, and so I apologize for that if it is completely on my confusion. But as we were going through the. Placement of the sculptures for the Call for Art. I did not connect that one of the, or a series of sculptures was going to go where the Midnight Stomp series was. And so. It, it, it seemed prudent to take some sort of action on the Midnight Stomp series if we're going to. Replace them with sculptures from the new Call for Art. And so wanted to have an opportunity for the commission to discuss. The pieces have been on loan to the city for a number of years. A few years ago, the artist approached the city about the city potentially purchasing them. At a discount from what they would normally go for or normally be sold for. At the time, the commission. Recognized that the city did not have funds or did not have a lot of funds set aside. And certainly not sufficient funds for the asking price of the sculptures to purchase them. And so at the time, we extended the, the loan agreement period for another two years. That two years has since lapsed. And so really there's, it's, it's up to the commission to discuss and decide. What we would like to do, again, the, the loan agreement, the loan period has expired and so if we like, we could ask the artist to come pick them up. Or if we want to extend it, if we want to purchase it, if we want to. Move them. We can have all sorts of conversations about.
All right, I'm, I'm going to give one piece of his, historical piece of information for our newer commissioners. That we'd asked Jamie when she was our staff liaison to get ahold of. The artist and, and see if we could extend it again and we were on, under the understanding that she had. Had that, done that or that that was in progress, so. It's a little surprising that, that that didn't happen. And also I was under the impression that the pieces, the, from the new Call for Art that we're talking about, taking that spot. I thought they were going to go in front of the, the spot for the flying car, the flying car. Is it ASCO is I think the name of the company?
Yes.
So that, that's where they're going, correct? The, the, they look like kaleidoscopes almost. So was there anything that was supposed to go where Midnight Stomp series currently is? And I looked to the subcommittee members on that one. Okay, so.
So Monica, that may be my misunderstanding because I thought the Midnight Stomp was leaving. So we, that's why, so it would be kind of weird because Midnight Stomp's right there and then. And like one more block down would be the three others, it seems like that'd be close together, but what do I know?
Well, we have plenty of spots where we have more than one sculpture within this, you know, a block or, or two block area in downtown.
So right now, Midnight Stomp, we had to kind of figure out what to do with, but there seems to be. I'd also thought it was going in front of the flying cars, but it sounds like no, it was supposed to go where, where Midnight Stomp is. So we need to decide, do we want to try to keep, keep Midnight Stomp or move Midnight Stomp and put the new ones there, correct?
Correct, and I, I think actually where Midnight Stomp is, it's not necessarily the best spot for any sculpture.
Lost.
It does get lost, now the, the kaleidoscope, and I don't remember the name of the series, so forgive me, but. Those are a little more colorful, so they may stand out against the Safeway building, but. I, I know, I, I get comments from people that. Unless you walk past them, like some people who walk. Yeah, exactly, that they don't get seen, so.
Do we, if we were to buy Midnight Stomp, do we have an idea of what would be a good location for it? Or is it something we want to maybe let, as it's had its time and. Let it go and put the other ones there?
I, I think I would let it go, I mean, it seems to me, given that, you know, we're bringing a lot of new art. It seems like a waste of resources to move this sculpture somewhere else. I would, I actually think they're perfect for that location, they kind of, I think the colors work with the buildings and the surrounding areas and I think people like them there. And I think I would just find another location for the other art. You know, again, just, you know, the idea of. uh, you know, again, just, you know, the idea of moving something just to put in a new piece of art and having two separate installations doesn't make sense to me, you know, in a resource constrained environment. I would just leave it there and then find another spot for the other art.
Which is called magnify.
Yeah, and.
Magnify.
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe, um, sorry.
That's good thinking. Yeah, I like that thought.
And, and maybe, maybe, I don't know if we do this, but maybe ask the car folks whether they would like or not like the sculpture in front of their, their, you know, display window. Um, because I think, I mean, I think it was wonderful, Monica, that you got that feedback from the restaurant about how they love Mother Hen. That's fantastic. And, and it seems like it would be nice to partner with the people who are going to be seeing that every day when they go to their jobs, but um, and, and I also want to thank John for putting this on the agenda. I think it was really good move, so we could talk about it.
So.
Well, I wonder if the subcommittee could either get that feedback from the store and/or suggestion of the location. But I do like Janet's reasoning that it's kind of a waste of resources to move it. Although that does mean we have to look into purchasing midnight stomp and kind of make it official.
Well, there's been, there's been three businesses so far there since Safeway opened, so the likelihood of flying car staying there, I think is probably minimal.
Yeah, I agree.
So I don't know why we should have to ask them anything, honestly.
It is wonderful.
We don't, it's not that we should have to ask them. I'm just saying, as a. Um, but could, you know, couldn't we instead of moving, jumping to buying, couldn't we approach the artists and do an extension?
Well, that, that's what as, as a commission, that's what we had, um, asked city staff to do uh, about six months, six plus months ago, and it didn't get followed through. And I'm not blaming John. John wasn't our staff liaison at the time. Um, and I, I don't know if the artist would extend it or not. Um, I, I know that, that the previous chair spoke to the artist. She said she was willing to extend it, but of course that's not the same as John approaching the artist and, and having a signed piece of paper, so. Um, I, so from what I'm hearing, um, do we want to, I, I guess there's probably two things here. The one is, um, the first one is, do we want to possibly extend the loan? And if so, then we have to look for maybe a different location for magnify. If that would be, um, acceptable, or do we want to not extend the loan? Ask the artist to come and, and pick up midnight stall. We don't know when she would be able to do that and then put magnify in.
I, I think I'd like to follow up on what the commission had originally intended and just, you know, reach out and just see if we could get an extension. And then, and then if we can't, then we have a decision, a decision to make.
John, um, gee, um, obviously we have, I guess we have to make a motion to do that, even though it was previously requested by the commission?
Yeah, it, it would be helpful since we have, uh, a number of new commissioners, um, to, to have a motion for it.
Okay. Um, Janet, you want to make a motion?
I'm sure. I, I, uh, would like to move that we, uh, contact the artist for midnight stomp and see if the artist would be willing to grant the city of Los Altos an extension for displaying midnight stomp in its current location.
For two years or four years or what?
It'd be two years.
Two years. I second the motion.
Okay. Emma? We'll do reverse order again. Commissioner Jan Giggian?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
And Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
And, um, John, can I ask that, uh, we have an agenda item or keep this on the agenda, that and a combination of the just item number, the next one that we're coming call for art, because we either we'll need to talk, we'll need to talk about magnify in the next meeting.
Yeah, so, so what I was going to suggest is I'll reach out to the artist. Um, if the artist is amenable to a two-year extension, then I'll make sure we do, process the paperwork. Um, and then I will report back at the next meeting of, of such. Um, I don't know if, if there's no problems, I don't know that there's a need for an agenda item. If there's a problem or, you know, the artist says, well, I don't want to extend it, I want to do this. Um, then certainly I'll put it on the agenda for discussion. Um, the next agenda item is the call for art. And so we can talk about the magnify on that agenda item. Um, I anticipate we'll also have that, um, on the agenda for the next meeting as well. So we'll be able to talk about magnify.
Okay, perfect. All right, and that makes for a good segue for our next item, which is the call for art. And before we discuss it, are there any comments from the public on our call for art and our placement of our new sculptures? All right, I don't hear anything. John, do you have any updates? We have two new pieces in the city.
Yeah, so, um, thank you to everybody who, uh, went out during the installs. Um, thank you for sending the pictures. Um, very exciting that they're, um, the sculptures are in. Um, and exciting that, uh, we got so much coverage on the, uh, front page of the, the, the newspaper, um, which is great. Um, continuing to work with the other artists on, uh, scheduling their installations. Um, we did run into, yeah, bless you. So we did, we did run into a snag on the staff side, um, where the, uh, individuals or some of the individuals who will prepare the concrete pads, um, for the sculptures, um, were called out of the office or were, were unable to come into work. Um, I think you can guess why. Um, and so, um, that put a delay on our installing the concrete pedestals. Um, the artists that I've been working with have been very understanding of that and, uh, willing to work. Um, and so continuing to work on that. Um, and as those get scheduled, I will of course reach out to, uh, all of you to let you know. So hopefully that you can, uh, come and, uh, see the artwork being installed, uh, meet the artist, et cetera. Um, I did want to report, there is one artist who, um, the, the commission approved installing some work from him, um, that is having some logistical issues. Um, one, he's, he's trying to see if he can make it work. Um, he is based on the east coast and, um, has some new family members, a, a new, a new child. And so is trying to figure out, um, when he can get out here, if he can get out here. Um, so I'm still working on that and will keep you updated, um, on my conversations with that.
John, can, can you identify which piece or pieces those are?
So it's, he, I believe he had two. Um, it's the, the heart. Um, I apologize, I, I don't remember the name of it off the top of my head.
I got it all.
You got it all, okay.
His name is Damien, correct?
No, Damien was the one who just installed.
Oh, that's the one who did this, the.
The other day.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the name right off, but I, he had the, he had that one and then he had, I believe it was a big one, um, that sort of looks like a gear. Yeah. Um, and so like I say.
Called sunrise.
Yeah. I'm still working with them, trying to see what we can do to make it work. Um, including whether or not, um, he can ship it out and city staff potentially. If it's an easy enough install, do the install ourselves.
That would be very expensive for him to do.
It, it would be so. And that's, that's part of his, um, what he's trying to figure out and sort of the conversations that we're having. So I will of course keep you all updated. Um, as I mentioned, we'll have it, we'll have this on the agenda next month. Hopefully I have a better idea of what's going on with him. Um, if I hear something ahead of time, um, and, and can schedule it, of course, I'll let you know, uh, when the, the, this, uh, install will be scheduled. Um, but that's sort of where we're at right now.
And do you know if we have any potential installs over the next month? Because we've had two in less than a week, which was almost too much excitement for the commission.
Um, it, a lot of it will depend on when the, uh, the concrete pads can be poured. Um, I know a couple of the artists, um, were ready to come down right away and install. Um, but we just didn't have the concrete pads. Um, I, I appreciate that it is, uh, a lot very quickly. Um, but that's, some of that is by design. Um, as in my talks with the maintenance staff, um, their preference is if we can do, even if we can do two on the same day, um, that's better for them than, rather than doing one, one day and then the next day and the next day and the next day. Um, or spreading them out over weeks. And so, um, as, as I'm scheduling, I'm trying to keep those two things in mind, just because it takes a lot to mobilize a crew, equipment, um, take them away from the work, the other work that they have to do. And so, um, if, like I say, maintenance staff's preference is either do a couple on the same day or spread them out. Um, you know, maybe one a week sort of thing, but, um, and a lot of it will depend on the, the artist's schedules.
Okay. And, and I just wanted to let everyone know, I sent a thank you, uh, email in regards to the, the city staff who were able to help us get our sculptures in because we, you know, vote on the call for art and have the sculptures come, but we're not the ones who are driving the heavy equipment and machinery and helping with the install. And we are very appreciative of their efforts, or at least I'm appreciative of their efforts.
They do, they do a fantastic job.
It ta, it takes a, a village to get in a sculpture installed, definitely.
Yeah.
Do we, uh, and I, Lucy, I believe you watched Cosmic Bliss, uh, installed as well, right? You saw that it, it takes the artist a while.
Right.
Pretty stuff.
Right, and it was wonderful. The city guy came just in time. And, uh, he helped him put it up and, uh, something was in the way, so it was good. I was there. I moved it out so that they could put it up. But, uh, he needed help. He needed help. He couldn't have done it alone.
So I stand corrected, we do actually, we help put, put the sculptures up, so I stand corrected.
Right, so it was very interesting and he was very pleasant to talk with and he said he had put two the day before in Mountain View.
In Mountain View.
In a closed section, in a gated place.
Called Pyramid Park, I believe. It's, it's a private, private. And then for, for the rest of the commissions, uh, to know, uh, John, whenever there's an install, you contact the Los Altos Town Crier and let them know, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have anything else on our, um, call for art installations?
Well, so the, the other thing that I think then now perhaps the commission would like to discuss is, uh, magnify what, uh, what the commission would like to do with the location of magnify or for the location of magnify.
So I, I think Terry had a good point that there's been two or three businesses in the location where the flying car business is right now. So, um, in general, we don't go to the business ahead of time and say, we're about to put a sculpture in place. We don't, you know, ask for permission. Um, it is city land, but I just wanted to add that. And, uh, Terry, you felt that it was going to be too much having magnify there and midnight stomp a block away?
The only thing I know is that a lot of the public has asked for art in South Los Altos. Um, so I hate to not make another run at trying to find a, a place down in South Los Altos to put something. Although we'll have more artists, whatever you all are comfortable with, I'm fine with. I
I just, I think that's a really good point. You raise a really good point.
Do we have another space down there in South Los Altos or another space in mind? Or can we go, go look for one or go think about one?
Um, so my thought is perhaps, um, in preparation for our next meeting, which would be end of March, is if the subcommittee, um, I don't believe they are disbanded at this point. John will correct me if I'm wrong. But if they could maybe look for another location and we'll know by the next meeting if midnight stomp, hopefully we'll know if midnight stomp is staying.
We can do that. We had made some notes on some other places, but we didn't really formalize anything, so. Do we need to make a motion for that?
No, I don't think so.
Top committee, so.
Yeah, it falls within the, the purview of the subcommittee.
Okay.
So yeah, the subcommittee could, could, uh, have some preparatory notes that may or may not come in handy. So we're, we may be making work for you that, that is not, uh, come, does not come to fruition. And if that's the case.
Good exercise.
Good, exactly. Nice weather.
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, what's the name of the one they put yes, uh, the, after the cosmic thing? They put another one yesterday or before yesterday.
Called Day on the Serengeti.
Oh, Day on the Serengeti, okay. Yeah, I saw it after the artist had left. I'm sorry. I would have liked to see it with, but I couldn't get there.
It, it was quite the show watching him installing.
I can imagine.
But at least you get to enjoy the piece now that it's there.
Right, right. It's lovely. The title's perfect, too.
Yes. And, um, I, I want to thank the subcommittee for selecting that spot. And, um, I was talking before the meeting started that I didn't think it was going to look good there and I stand corrected. It looks really wonderful in the spot that was selected, so.
Mm-hmm.
Kudos to the, uh, subcommittee. All right. Onto our next agenda item. If we have nothing else to say about our call for art locations and our subcommittee having more work to do. Um, the community art engagement project. Before we start discussing that, do we have any comments from the public?
Uh, Monica, if I can, did I think Dance With Me was on the agenda or did we have a, not that?
I know, that's, that comes, we got two more.
Number eight.
Number eight.
I'm sorry, okay.
You are, you are, now, now you're jumping the gun. So yeah, but don't worry, Dance With Me is on the agenda. Um, all right, so the community art engagement project, um, are Everybody is an Artist and Hometown Haiku. We have two projects to discuss. And I'll hand it over to the people on the subcommittee to, uh, keep us abreast of what's going on.
Yeah, Janet, can you talk about Everybody is an Artist? I'm kind of cutting it and out as we go over the past. But so Janet, can you talk first about Everybody is an Artist?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so, uh, as you may recall, we decided to reschedule the event, uh, for a variety of reasons. And so the date that was selected was March 19th, uh, at the community center from one to three. Um, so, uh, a new flyer has been issued and, uh, posted in the community center and a variety of other spots around town. And my understanding is that Commissioner Moore also, um, posted it on Nextdoor. I sent the flyer and some information to, um, to a network that I have in Los Altos. And, um, and I don't know, um, if we, well, let me back up. Um, I also confirmed, thanks to John's help, that the image that we want to use, um, we, we, we can do it and there's no issue with copyright. Uh, and Paint the Town is looking at making that image, um, uh, in a form that people who are not really artists can actually paint it and walk away with something that they'll be happy with. And so I'm just waiting for them to, to give, get back to me on that.
Um, it's a painting of the orchard, I think you said. Yeah.
You, that's right. It's a, it's, it's Los Altos Heritage Orchard with, um, you know, the, I think it's the mustard flowers in front of it and two little kids. It's really, it's beautiful. Um, and I think it was Commissioner Moore or was it Commissioner King who found it, but it was, it was beautiful. Um, and then the only thing I think that we're trying to track is two things, continue the comms and, um, hopefully get a mention in the, uh, city manager's weekly update, you know, something that just says, hey, this is happening. Um, and then continue, uh, the, the reach out on, you know, social media. Um, and then maybe, I don't know, John, if you have an update, have, have we gotten any RSVPs yet or I don't, it's kind of early?
Um, I, I will have to check for sure, but I know we had some interest from, uh, a handful of people the first time.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I would assume that they will be interested still, um, but I will have to double check and see if we have any firm commitments so far.
That sounds wonderful. So yeah, so maybe, um, the subcommittee can just, we'll stay in touch with you.
All right. Excuse me, I didn't get what's happening on the 19th. What's happening on the 19th? March 19th, you said?
Public outreach event that we discussed in December and in January. And it's the, where people will be able to go to, um, to. And it's the, where people will be able to go to, um, to the community center and paint an image on a canvas that they'll be able to take home with them.
Oh, okay, thank you. So are we, are we encouraged to be there that day, sort of?
I think so, yeah. I think it's a great opportunity for, for us to meet people. Uh, you don't have to.
No, but what time would that be? Is it for?
It's, um, it's, um, one to three.
Okay, thank you.
I, yeah, I think we should, if you could at least, I mean, I plan to come by wearing my badge and saying hello, welcoming people for sure. Um, I think if we can, I think that's, that'd be a great thing to do. Um, and we want to get pictures of the finished product and everything as well. Thank you, Janet, though, for that report. They've done a great job kind of pivoting and rebooking and everything. Before I talk about the Hometown Haiku, I do want to note that this is where having our own social media platform will be essential and critical. It's great that we can get word out via the city manager's email and Nextdoor, but it would be something that I hope we can have, try to get on the agenda, is kind of having a social media outlet for the commission. And I'll just keep pushing on that. Moving on to Hometown Haiku, um, on that note, because we are using kind of the same forms to push things, I'm also, I'm also a little bit concerned that sometimes the message gets muddled. This is something I thought of as a way for National Poetry Month, which is April. We could encourage residents in a contest that would, um, award prizes to people who could describe Los Altos in seven, um, in 17 syllables. Which I, we can do and we, the subcommittee has talked about it. I am a little bit concerned now that we are pushing so, we're trying so hard to get people's attention for various projects. I am worried it's going to get muddled. So I'll take the feedback or note on that. But this would be something we could do for Poetry Month, award, um, gift card prizes to different age categories from kindergarten on up through, um, all of our residents. And then hopefully either try to get them posted somewhere, published in the town crier or even put on, um, yard signs and put maybe somewhere around library or orchard. So that's what that is. I think there's a proposal that I wrote on the agenda.
So the, I remember the city of Palo Alto had these, um, there were posters that they posted all over the place with, uh, like positive messages, which is I think kind of your vision for the Hometown Haiku being printed and put around the library, correct?
Initially positive, but, but Haiku, yes.
I know Haiku can be not positive, but, um, let me ask John and maybe Anita would know the answer. Is there any, uh, indication that we'll be meeting back in the council chambers anytime in the next two, three months?
Well, that's a very good question. The short answer is it depends. Um, and the long answer is it depends on if the council chamber, or when the council chambers, uh, project, construction project is completed as well as, um, when the city council makes a determination that, uh, in person or hybrid or some form of combination of meetings, um, is appropriate for the city.
Okay, and the reason I asked was I thought maybe we could take the haikus or some of them, print them and, um, display them in the new city, the, the renovated city council chambers. I think maybe they would get more viewing in front of the library, but.
Yeah, we could. We could do that in Lacey. I mean, we could, you know, we could put them on yard signs if we wanted to do like the top three or five and put the yard signs in front of the orchard or something for a week or something. We could ask the town crier to publish them or, you know, we could run them on the city websites. Or on the Lacey Arts Commission websites. We could maybe get Rec to see it, the Rec department, since they have a social media, they will put them on there. So there's different ways we could put them. Um, I would like to get feedback, though. Are we trying to do too many things and having to put out too many calls? I do, I do have a concern about that. I think I've been kind of reassured that we are, but I want to make sure that I'm not going to be kind of casting a net and nothing coming in.
Right now, we've got, um, two things and, and this kind of segues into, uh, the next agenda item and John will, will tell me to stop if I am, um, muddying the waters here. But we do have a call for art for the community center and we also have the, um, it's not a call, but the Everybody is an Artist.
Right.
So we're already trying to recruit.
Right, exactly. So I don't, I'm concerned that are we kind of using our bandlets? Limited as it is. And maybe I'm just imagining it, I don't know.
I mean, so the, and John will touch upon how many people have, uh, contacted him or submitted anything for item seven in a minute, but, um, between that, which is supposed to be March 1st and then March 19th, then we don't have anything in April. I guess the question is for the Hometown Haiku, how baked is the program? Because you're saying that, well, we'll display them here, we might display them there. We might have, uh, you know, different categories. Um, how ready of a program, uh, do you have for?
I wrote a proposal that I sent, so I think that's in the documents. I can, you know, getting it ready is not too tough. It's getting word out. That is always our challenge. And just remains being. So I mean, you could say, here's an email address, you can send in your entry or, and we have a drop off box at City Hall, drop your entry here. It's just getting the word out. Kind of rolling that stone uphill again.
Anita? Were you going to say something? Looked like you were going to, okay. Um, how do people feel? Do they think we have too much? Uh, when we're trying to get, get the public to acknowledge that, you know, the, the Arts Commission is out there and we're, we either have programs for people or programs where they can participate? Are we trying to bite off too much? And, and Hillary is, is right that it's hard for us to get the word out on anything. So I mean, that's also, you know, pretty hot. It's a pretty high hurdle to jump.
Keep in mind, we're hoping to have some farmer's market activities going on too in spring.
But we're reaching to different kinds of people, different groups for different things, like one is poetry, one is art. So, uh, I think it's good because it's, it's reaching different arts, different kinds of art.
Yeah, I mean, Haiku is not a visual, other than if we print it out and put it on a poster, but it's not a visual form of art.
Yeah, but it would, it would, uh, attract a different kind of person than from an artist who is a painter or a sculptor. I think it's good to give different arts opportunities, not just sculpture or just painting. You know, I don't know. That's how I feel.
I, 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 I agree with Lucy. I think that's, that's a good point.
Okay, we'll try it. We'll see. I'll nail down where we can get the results.
Okay, a question. Has it been done before or is this the first time?
This would be the first time here. It's a pretty, I mean, Haiku contests are pretty common. The, there's a bakery in Cataluma that has a pie one and do a heist about pies every year and it's quite popular. So it's a pretty common contest. This is the first one that I know of done here. And I, I would love to see how people describe Los Altos, so I think it'd be fun.
Yeah, I think it should be exciting then. It's something new for the people here, so that's good.
Okay, we will try that. I'll try to nail a place to present them to the public and then we'll go ahead and get it going. I don't, we already, I think, approved as the last one. I don't think we need to do a motion. Do we mind encourage, John?
I don't think we do. And, and I, I wanted to echo what, uh, Lucy said and Janet agreed with, that I think it's a form of, uh, art, um, that we as a commission have not addressed before. And I think the commission, we'd like to do things other than just sculptures and, you know, call for art where we put something on the wall. So I think, I think it's worthy to try.
Definitely.
Okay.
As, as long as you're still game, Lori.
And we, um, I, I don't think this may be, but we had, I had communicated with John and the outreach committee that, um, we will like to be, have a table at the farmer's market. Um, and we will, I think, discuss that further if that does become a possibility. So that's also part of outreach, but we will definitely, hopefully be involving the whole commission or other commissioners as well.
Nice. That's exciting, yeah. Has, have you done it before? That's what?
No, we, we've talked about it many times.
Yeah, I think it's great to try new things. We may make it. But we never.
City is trying to have each commission represent at the farmer's market. So I think the city is also taking a role in that.
John, do you want to comment on that at all?
Yeah, um, yeah, as, as mentioned, the city is looking at having, uh, some tables during the farmer's market. And so we can certainly get the Public Arts Commission into sort of the rotation to have a table at the farmer's market.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll send you an email so we can talk more about that later.
Can I ask a question? What about, I, I'm sure you, I haven't seen a table, um, at the Arts and Wine Festival before. You know, they have, you know, twice a year. I have, do you guys have a table out there? I don't remember seeing one. You do?
I think public comment is, is not open, is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not, but John, am I allowed to actually answer the question?
Sure, if you like.
The question is, no, we, we haven't had a table in the past. But, um, at the, um, Hillary, uh, personed, um, at the Rotary Show this last summer.
Yeah.
So we have.
And, you know, one of the art festivals done by, is done by the Rotary, so, um, and the other one, I guess, is what is art wine put on by lava? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think so, but I'm, I'm not sure.
So we definitely support them and we were happy to be at the, uh, Lincoln, in Lincoln Park. Gosh, without this year, no, that was last year.
Summer, last.
Last summer, but, um, yeah, we're happy and we do have collaboration proposals. We would love to, but that's different art organizations. So we would have talked about it in the past. It's just, you know, something we can, we work on proposing, so. The, uh, farmer's market will be a good way for us to kind of get our table and what we want to communicate or do with the public as well together. Keeping in mind, these are also all volunteer hours.
And that also might segue into, we have an agenda item about the art task force that, um,
Yes.
that might segue into that.
Okay.
Um, all right, I think, um, onto the next item, the community center art subcommittee report. And before we discuss that, any comments from the public? And I hear no comments. I can, uh, give a little bit of an update and Hillary, um, or Lucy can jump in. Actually, let me just say this, um, Hillary, did we get the letters yet? Do you know?
We had the letters and, um, we're going to wait on getting them, uh, John, I can't remember well, why we decided that. We have them in and, oh, I asked if the city could put them up, that's why.
I think that's where we left it, yeah.
Yes, and then we're just going to get that on the schedule. The city is going to put up the lettering. Um, but they want one of us to be there, which we will certainly be glad to be there to help with that.
And we have a call for art for the, uh, community center. John, have we had any submissions? We have a March 1st deadline.
We have.
Slowly approaching.
Yeah, we, we have. Um, it's, the last time I looked, we had at least, it was, yeah, somewhere between six to eight, um, submissions so far.
Nice.
Yay.
Yay.
Yay. So we have a few more days for that call for art. It sounds like as long as all of the pieces or, um, that are submitted, we have, we have enough space for six to eight, if not more. As long as they follow within our guidelines for art, um, hopefully we will have enough to, to hang. Um, I need to follow up with Mary Jo from Parks and Rec because I asked her if the current show that is up, if we could move the photos from, that we made with Anita's help from, uh, pictures from the Los Altos History Museum and we framed them, um, if we could move them into the senior South, uh, Los Altos Senior Center. And, um, I'm going to write myself a note to follow up with her on that. Um, I don't know, i- if she says that yes, we could hang them there, then, um, I guess next month we can make a motion if we want to move that art, uh, exhibit over to the senior center in South Los Altos. Um, do we have anything else, Hillary, that we need to touch on for the community center? I think we're still wa- are we still waiting on?
Um, I don't.
Finage for the tower, I think. Or do we get that?
Uh, I don't know if we got the tower.
We're still working on it.
Okay. Sorry, Hillary, I, I cut you off. Go ahead.
No, no, John had the answer.
I, all right, I think that was it for the, uh, community center. I am very excited to hear that we have gotten, uh, entries for our call for art. That's, that's wonderful news. Okay, on to the next agenda item, Will You Dance With Me? Before we discuss it, anything from the public, any public comments on Will You Dance With Me? Nope. Okay. Um, so Will You Dance With Me?
I have a public comment. I'm sorry, my hand thing isn't working. I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Yes.
Um, I would, a very brief comment on this piece of art. While I am of the mind in general that art is in the eye of the beholder and anybody on earth can do whatever they want in art, and I strongly, strongly support that. I do want to express my opinion that every time I look at this piece of art, and no disrespect to the maker, but it looks like they are making a motion with their hand that, um, uh, that is a political statement that I do not like. So, uh, that is just a, a completely subjective and personal comment, but I feel compelled to make it because I see it every day. Thank you.
All right, um, the reason that Will You Dance With Me is an agenda item is because the piece has some damage and that was, uh, brought to our attention by our maintenance subcommittee that, uh, the work needs, needs a little bit of work. Um, I think the, the question is, do we try to fix it or do we try to just de, it's on decommission, there's another word, uh, for it, but we, we, is it time to decommission this piece? And, uh, Hillary, I think you tried to get ahold of the artist and the artist said, bring it down and he would fix it.
He said, bring it down and fix it, and he'd fix it, but I couldn't fit it in my car. I didn't want to strap the artwork to the top of my car. And then I indicated that, and I haven't heard back from them. Um, I would maybe vote for decommissioning it. I do think art has a lifespan and, um, it's done its, it served its purpose there and that kind of opens up that space for a while. And then if we bring in other art, it can be there. So I would, I would lean towards, let's decommission it. And if we ever get a chance to get it fixed, then maybe we put it somewhere else. But that's where I stand on it.
Um, and, and one little piece of history for the new commissioners is the piece was donated by the artist. And John might remember what year that was. I don't remember what year. It's been there for a while. But, uh, it is owned by the city at this point. So it is, it is ours to decide what to do with.
Does anybody know what kind of paint that is, that?
I, I don't think it's actually paint.
I think the material, the physical.
Some sort of material, yeah.
Is, is, um, delaminating or crumbling or has, it has holes in it.
It's peeling. It's sort of peeling. I walk by it almost every day. It's right near me. And would we put something else up there? It's a nice spot.
In, in case it helps, it was installed in 2013. So Commissioner King's point, I mean, I agree, life sometimes has a life, art has a lifespan and, and it's been there a while.
I mean, the, the other option is, um, and, and John will not like this, is we could decommission it and put it in cold storage and one day maybe bring it back.
Would you fix it? Would you fix it before you store it?
Um, we would probably mothball it as is and then, um, it, it, one day when someone does an archaeological dig, wherever we store things from the city, decide to bring it back and put it in front of City Hall.
As is or fixed?
Well, I, I'd imagine you'd. Well, I, I'd imagine you'd want to fix it, but Yeah. You know, if somebody thought like this would be great to put in front of a park. But I, I kind of agree, it's, it's with our commenter from the public that it's not one of my favorite pieces. Personally, I, I am not a big fan. It could be fun if we fixed it, moved it maybe in front of the dance studio, but if it's, if it's, it's time to go, I think it's I, I don't know if anyone else has an opinion on the piece.
We want to take a vote? We make a motion, take a vote?
Let, I, I think it's time to take, make a motion to, to vote on do, if we want to decommission it and I guess send it to the scrap heap.
Or storage.
Or storage.
Yeah, I make a motion that we decommission will you dance with me from the kind of current sculpture program and move it into storage until a more permanent solution can be found.
I will second the motion.
Okay.
John?
Sorry. Um, okay, I will call the roll. Chair Waldman?
Uh, yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Okay.
I'll take that as a yes. And Commissioner Jan Gigian?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
John, do you have room in your office for it?
I do not.
And is, or are you gonna fix it and put it anyway? He doesn't want it unfixed.
As part of the, the motion, John, will we really store it or will we just? Is, is that okay that we want to store it or will it just kind of disappear?
What I will do is I will talk with our maintenance staff about whether or not we can sort of mothball it and store it and get their feedback. I believe the, the decommissioning procedures says that we will have a public meeting, hold at least one public meeting for the purpose of gathering feedback on a proposed decommissioning. Since it was not agendized tonight for decommissioning it, what I will do is we'll add it to the agenda next, for the next meeting. I'll have a better idea whether or not we can store it. And we can, you know, go from there at the next meeting. Take formal action to, to decommission it.
Yeah. May I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. When the artist, she give it, it's a gift, right?
He, he, he gave it, yes.
Okay, he gave it. Would he be interested in fixing it? Has anybody asked?
Well, Hillary just touched upon that, that she contacted the artist and he said, if you bring me, he's in Southern California. If you bring it to me, I will fix it.
Oh.
Uh, but Hillary said she couldn't fit it in her car and
Oh, that's what she was talking about.
She, she, she's finishing a trip to Southern California and
Yes.
I don't know if any of us really want to go driving it there and back.
Right.
I don't know how long it would take to fix either.
All right. Okay, he's not willing to come up and
I don't feel like tipping.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's worth the expense of shipping it back.
No, no, it's too expensive. It's too expensive. Art shipping is terrible. Sorry, sorry if it was, I, I didn't put
No, no, it's fine. So John, we'll, we'll have this on the agenda next time as well.
Lovely.
Yep.
Okay.
And it'll be agendized to indicate that commission is discussing or is going to decide whether to decommission or not.
Right, right, okay.
All right. Um, next item is the Los Altos Art Task Force Group. And before we touch on that, I'm, I'm gonna ask if there's any comments from the public. Okay.
Yes, I, I have a comment. I'm sorry, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you. I think this, this idea is a great thing. I hope that you move forward with this collaboration. And in particular, with the idea about the haiku contest. You know, through collaboration, it might be interesting to consider uh, creating some kind of a contest, for example, where you commission an artist through collaboration with some of the groups that have access to private buildings, you know, to business buildings, to put the winning haikus as decoration in an artful way on a building. And they will forever be, or at least for a long time, be commemorated and, and adored by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I, I think you'll be at our meeting next week as well. Um, Hillary, I know this is your, I don't want to use the word term baby, but this is something you've been wanting for a long time. I'll let you touch on it.
Uh, yes, this is just grew out of a realization of there's a lot of great things happening with art in Los Altos from various groups, both public and private. Um, but there's not always coordination or communication, so we don't always know uh, what other groups are doing, so we can't help either promote them or collaborate with them. So it's really born out of the idea of that, that if we can get some of the groups together or all the groups together, then we can maybe find ways to do that. So we have emailed as many art groups, both public and private in the city of Los Altos that we could find. And we have heard back from several, I think we have a, a pretty good number attending. Um, I don't have the list in front of me, but I think we have like seven or eight planning. We're having a Zoom meeting next week, inviting everyone just informally to get together. And so, yeah, I think we have about seven or eight of, a lot of the great groups that are doing just great things in Los Altos. So we, we have no agenda. We're not here to give marching orders or take marching orders. We're really just here to get everybody together, see if there's ways we can work together or to do some, say, help promote each other or collaborate and see what people want to do and see what people think they can do. So that's really where we are. And I think we've actually been really happy to get um, the positive feedback to this idea that people are, this is something people are excited about and want, want to see happen. Um, would you add anything to that, Monica?
Uh, no, other than we have like the Freestyle Academy, which is a school, a high school program out of Mountain View High, which Mountain View High serves students from both Mountain View and Los Altos. And they will be, they're gonna have somebody representing their organization. So the, there might be a little bit further over breadth of people, not just Los Altos, but I think it will be mostly Los Altos centric. And the meeting is, if I recall, March 1st from 5:30 to 6:30. Am I correct, Hillary?
That's correct. And again, we are really going in. We don't have an agenda. We really will want to, if people want to do what, what we can do. And hopefully we'll, we'll get, have a good discussion.
And Janine had a, a good point that maybe some of our calls for art or call our, our haikus and things like that. Maybe this would be a good forum to help, have them help us get the word out to, to increase the focus and increase the number of entries we get for these calls. So we're, we're going into this not knowing what's going to be discussed, but, but Hillary described it really well. And hopefully we can find some areas of collaboration. And, and just have an idea of things that are going on in the city. And Terry, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Is the subcommittee gonna report back to the full committee next meeting then?
Yes, I was just gonna say we will report back at the next meeting.
Thank you so much.
And since Terry touched on that, John, you will keep this as an agenda item for our next meeting. And we, we will hopefully have a full report and I, I hope for a very positive report.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, okay, Hillary, did you have anything else on the task force, the, for the?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay. All right. Getting close to the end of the agenda, budget recommendations. Before we go into our budget, are there any comments from the public on our budget recommendations? Nope. Okay. John? How are we gonna spend our money?
Um, sure. Well, thank you for the, 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 the chance to bring this before the commission. We are starting to get into, the city is starting to get into the budget process. Um, as part of the budget process will be adjustments to the, to the capital improvement plan, of which we do have a, a couple of projects that are related to public art. The, the big one is the annual public arts project. This past fiscal year, so the one that we are currently in, the city council approved $60,000 towards that project of public art funds. That was at the commission's recommendation to cover the cost for call for art as well as, I believe, some additional work at the community center for the murals. Um, and then as well, I believe $35,000 for
Musical gamble?
Yeah, for restoration of musical gamble. Um, that would involve, I believe that it was a full restoration where the artist, or not the artist, excuse me, the art restorer would come. I can't remember if he was gonna do it, he could, they would do it onsite or if they take it to their workshop, work on it and bring it back and reinstall it. That included sort of the full restoration of removing all rust, restoring any of the metal, full painting of the piece, et cetera. And so as indicated in the, the report to the commission, any unused funds for the current fiscal year stay in the project and sort of roll over from year to year. Um, as well, the commission can recommend, recommend um, additional dollars be allocated for the upcoming fiscal year. Recommendation from myself is that the commission identify specific dollar or specific uses for the dollars, rather than just saying, oh yeah, $100,000 sounds great. Let's recommend $100,000 more of, these are the projects and this is the dollar amount that we think we are, they, we think that they will cost. And we can structure the recommendation that way. In terms of timing, the draft, budget and CIP will go to the city council, I believe, towards the end of May. And so we have a couple of months to sort of think of ideas and, and come up with some recommendations. Um, I would strongly encourage the commission to, by the April commission meeting, to have their, the recommendation fully formed, so that it can be included as part of the draft that goes to the city council.
And I'll just reinforce that timeline because out of courtesy to the staff, Mr. Furtado and staff will be putting together the budget for council consideration. And being able to meet that timeline would also help them out a lot.
Okay, so at, at this time, I don't think we have any, well, we're going to the work plan, but we don't right now have any, any thing that is a large ticket item that should be in the budget, but I think we need to start thinking about that. Um, as far as maybe a gateway project or perhaps if appropriate, doing a call for art and having something site specific made.
Uh, if we talk about something site specific, when the meeting room gets finished, it would be nice to have some art in there.
And, and that, we've had, you're talking about the city council chambers, correct?
Yes.
So we, we've had some pieces that we borrowed from the history museum from there. I think it was from Paint the Town, the second Paint the Town. But it would be nice to have like a, a call for art or maybe have some specific pieces that are, are there permanently. I, I agree. So that might be something to, to add to the budget. Oh, Hillary? There we go. Okay. John, since as a commission, we've never had the problem of trying to figure out how to, to, you know, how to wisely spend money and, and look for art that's appropriate and such. Um, how would you recommend we proceed?
Um, well, I think there's a, a couple of ways that we could go. We could certainly talk about potential ideas now as part of this current agenda item. Um, we could always have a subcommittee who comes up with some ideas and comes back. Uh, we could have each commissioner go away and, and think about sort of some ideas and what potential costs might be. Um, and then at our next meeting in March, have a sort of a, a broader discussion where we start narrowing down and, and coming up with some ideas. Of course, I'm happy to help if, you know, you have an idea for a project but don't know, know the first thing about what the cost might be. I probably don't know either, but I can certainly help, help to figure it out. So there's, there's a number of ways that we could go about doing it. Um, and it completely at the discretion of the commission, how you'd like to sort of work towards a recommendation.
Monica, Janet's hand is up.
Oh, Janet, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you, Terry. So one of the concerns I have is, you know, given the state of finances for the city is to do exactly what you said, Chair Waldman, which is to use the money wisely and spend it judiciously. And so I, I like what, what John said about, you know, maybe each of the commissioners coming up with ideas. But what, what would you also think of maybe trying to survey, you know, Los Altans and to find out what do they want in their city? I mean, to get another data point. And then maybe we put all of that information together and then we have a conversation about what are the priorities? And, and I don't even know if we, we would, oh, I guess we're an advisory body, the city council, so you probably don't want to ask them. But, but basically just get information and then make a list of priorities. And then that includes costs, so we can decide what would be a good recommendation.
Um, I like the idea of surveying people. I know when the city does surveys that unfortunately sometimes we get a very small percentage of people responding.
I've got some experience with that.
I, I know that, uh, May, end of May is, is actually not that far away is, is my other concern. And we did, we surveyed when we were trying to do a master art plan way back when, I think 2017 as well. It would require probably a subcommittee to come up with a survey. And then either we make a motion right now to, that, that they have the ability to come up with a survey and give it to John for John to try and push through city venues to get feedback before our next meeting. Um, which wouldn't, which means we'd have to get, you'd have to get the survey done and out the door and have a deadline within the next month. And John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I, I ask my other commissioners if, if they think that's a good idea.
I, could I?
Cause we have, it's something we haven't done before.
I think it would be really hard to get done in this quickly. I think it is something we could collect information on over the summer if we're at the farmer's market because we get a great kind of access to the town at that time. And I think that would be great to kind of have that there. I think it would be really tough to get a survey just turned around that fast. Is there a way we could come up with uses for this kind of specific funds? Or part of the funds and then kind of work on surveying over a longer period of time?
Maybe what we could do is, is say we want to do, you know, a gateway project or something that's commissioned and not have a dollar amount attached to it and, and survey, you know, as Hillary was saying, maybe during the summer. And, and I echo what Janet said is I, I know the city, the finances, there's a few issues. So we don't want to seem like we're just spending money. We, we want to spend our, our We want to spend our money wisely and maybe no money will come in for a long time, so we have to be very careful with funds. So.
Monica, if I if I could, I'll add one other thing. I don't want the commission to come away thinking that this is the only time that a project can get funded throughout the year. It's certainly something that if if the commission wants to do some more community outreach and whatnot, we could make a recommendation for the the actual CIP of what the, you know, perhaps I'll call them known expenses. You know, if you, if the commission wants to do another call for art and wants to set aside a certain amount for stipends for entries, we can certainly include that and include a smaller dollar amount. And then the commission can spend some time working, you know, doing outreach. I tend to agree that doing sufficient outreach or surveying in the next less than two months is doable, but maybe not. It we may not get as much input as we would like. And so continue to work on. And later in the year, we can take a separate recommendation for perhaps a bigger project or additional funding for to allocate additional funds to the to the CIP.
And I do know that Sonia, if she's still our PR person, she's probably pretty busy with the housing element surveys and such. So I think it's going to be a little tough to to get people's attention because that one is going to, she's going to be busy with that. I would like to see us think about something a little bit bigger than sculpture loan programs and items that we hang on walls, even though I push for the community center to have an art gallery, but I I'm open to doing a survey before we even start trying to decide what we want to do next. I think Janet has a good idea. I don't know if if people know what they want when it comes to art. I mean, there are some people with definite ideas.
We may need to be very thoughtful about that. I mean, if they say I want art classes, then, you know, we have a lot of art classes around town, so we may need to be very, if we do a survey, be very thoughtful of how we, what we ask and how we ask it of. Do you want more sculpture? Do you want less sculpture? Do you want more free, do you want free art classes? Do you want art classes like they have at the Rex Center? Do you want a bigger art installation by a well-known artist? Do you want Crisco's legacy to come wrap City Hall? I would vote for, but we may need to just be very specific on that. I think I like John's note, although we have until the April meeting, correct? Is that right? And I guess maybe we, can we maybe the commissioners do try to come up with a list of ideas and we have a special leader to discuss them? Or is that out of pocket or is that not? Or we discuss it in March?
Or or what is, here's a suggestion, maybe a subcommittee to try and come up with some ideas such as, we're not going to maybe wrap City Hall, but you know, a gateway project of this, just to give examples, because if we do a survey, we probably need examples. Like, would you like to see A? Would you like to see B? Would you like to see C? And then present it at the next meeting so that we can perhaps get a survey going. And I think if if that exercise, if we go through that, then we as a subcommittee and a commission will have some ideas of things that we possibly could do. That would be my suggestion. And I guess as the longest standing person or sitting person on the commission, I'd be very happy to be on a subcommittee. Is there anyone else who would like to volunteer for the subcommittee?
What would the subcommittee be for? Sorry?
It would be for coming up with ideas. So your idea of a survey is a good one, but I think we need to crisp up what we want to ask people to think about, you know, would they like, as Hillary was saying, would they like a piece made by a well-known artist? Would they like this? Would they like that? You know, it just because we need to.
It has to be the objective.
We need some direction. We need to, we need to give the people we're surveying some direction as far as here are some possibilities, what, you know.
I would love to be on the subcommittee with you if you, if that would work for you. And maybe I could bring to the table some of, you know, some benchmarking maybe from some other cities, what they've done. So.
Just wondering, why are we talking about what we're going to spend our money on when we don't even know what kind of money we have? I that's not the way I work, sorry.
Well, we do have money. John, would you like to give an estimate of how much we have?
Yeah, so at the last budget time, I believe it was 100, we had $166,000 of public art funds. As I mentioned, 60,000 was allocated to last year's project. We just had another development project that came in and contributed $200,000 to the city's public art fund. So we have
260?
About 300, about 300,000 or so. Just as a quick estimate.
And we didn't go through
And we did, we know that the conservation some into conservation, I think that's a fair given, and the conservation subcommittee is going to meet and talk about that.
Yeah, so there should be some maintenance, some money's going towards maintaining city assets or art pieces are city assets. And our call for art between paying cafe, which is the way that we publicize the call, and also our stipends that cost some money, so there has been some outlay of money this year.
For, are we going to judge the art when it comes? Is there going to be first place, second place, or is it all perfect acceptance or?
Well, we're not talking right now about a call for, we're talking about the budget for.
I know, I mean, then will we give money to the first or second? That's where I'm coming from. Oh, okay.
No, our our call for like the community center, it's for the purpose of, you know, showing artwork in the community center.
That's why I brought, we were going to give them money on first, okay, that's where it came in.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, yeah, so that would not be part of our budgeting process.
Perfect.
Is there anybody else who would be interested in joining the subcommittee? Or is it a subcommittee of two?
And what exactly required? How much time?
Probably research. Yeah, doing some research as far as what other cities have done or doing. And not that, you know, Los Altos is a unique community, but just seeing some best practices of a acquiring art and, you know, and also having money to maintain that art and how they budgeted for it.
Not sure I could help in that.
All right, Janet, it looks like it's you and me.
Okay, sounds like it's planned.
So we will work together and see if we can come up with some information for our next meeting. So definitely we'll have this as a an item on the next meeting's agenda as well. All right, getting to the the wire here. Before we discuss it, are there any public comments on our work plan? Nope, John?
Yeah, so felt it would be a good time, opportunity to include the work plan just to see if there's any changes or thoughts, if there's projects that the commission wants to get started on or perhaps remove from the work plan. This is just an opportunity to to have it sort of a check-in. It's been a few months since we put this together and then presented it to the city council. And so have an opportunity to sort of discuss the work plan as as needed.
Do you want to bring it up or?
I can do that. Let me let's see here. Are you all seeing that?
It says started screen sharing and we see a circle.
It's in process. Viewing.
There we go.
There we go, yeah, but it's can we make it bigger a little?
Let's see here.
I have my reading glasses on, I can still barely read it.
How about that?
Much better.
That's better, thank you.
All right. So we have community outreach. We have two worlds, one voice poetry reading, so that should probably I don't want to see be, say be tabled, but
Well, it is scheduled for April.
To the hometown haiku, is that fair?
One of the readers, one of the poets is in China. I'm going to reach out to her this week and see if she's going to be able to get back. If she's not, I'm going to, I'll table it or I'll see that we table it because there's, she's not been able to get back yet from China. So if she's not, we'll go ahead and table that.
Okay, so if, John, you stopped us.
I did, I'm going to call up the Word version.
Okay.
So I can take notes as we discuss.
And John, when we present to city council next November, do we present things that we started on that the commissioners worked on? Maybe, you know, Hillary's put work into this particular program and maybe if it, if it doesn't come to fruition, is it still worth mentioning and keeping on the work plan?
I think so. I mean, it's, it's worth keeping on the work plan if the commission wants to continue working on it in the future. If there's no intention to do any more work on it, then we would, I would suggest we take it off.
So it may be the case of if for some reason, if the one member of, for that particular project can't make it back.
We can find other things for work. I'd rather not, I mean, we started, started this in September, so last year, so I'd rather not keep pushing it back. That's not fair to them. They can book other gigs. So if we can't get it, we can, we can, trust me, we, we can fill up that work plan.
Okay. Okay. All right, can you, searching for community involvement programs? We have painting the pandemic, which was completed in the Bear Call Print, which been completed, so we should probably remove that, but we can put in everybody as an artist.
Just go straight in.
Those are upcoming.
Can we get one of these schedules that could we? Or should we copy it or?
So the work plan was included in the packet as agenda item 11. So if you call up your packet, you'll have it there. Otherwise, otherwise I could also send it out to the commission.
Yeah, and John, since you are changing it, you're putting some notes in, could you send it out to everyone? Thank you.
We'd appreciate it, I think.
All right, the next items is established community arts council. I think that is the Los Altos
Yes, I think the name is still a little bit up in the air, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so then that should stay on the on the work plan and it says early 2022, so we can put more, starting March 2022. Next one is partnership grant program, which was, I think we discussed it last meeting or the previous meeting for the micro grants of $1,000 to underfunded arts organizations.
It's ready to go, we just had so many things.
We decided to table it till September, if I remember correctly. Exactly. All right, PR outreach, work with city PR support for communication outreach. I think that one is definitely outgoing, ongoing, not outgoing. Updates to Los Altos Commission Art Guidelines, those are, should be taken off. Okay, here's one we haven't discussed for a while, expanding existing public arts footprint, things like our walking and bike tours that we had discussed prior to our new commissioners joining. That one we should probably keep on on the work plan.
I think we had Jenna, I think I missed out to ask Jenna to look at the posters. I'm not sure, I'll have to email her and see if we talked about that. And if we'd gotten, I think Mary Jo had the old bird here, so maybe we can. Was that the same thing or was that different?
Well, there was two things, there was a create, we talked about creating a walking or a bike tour and or a bike tour for looking at the public art. And we've talked about that on and off for years and and I believe online, the, there is a copy of the like two revs ago, the the art map that needs to be updated. Explore the possibility of gateway art sculptures. I guess we are just about to to start on that process. Call for art or public art sculpture. I don't know if we're going to do one this year, so maybe we should leave it there just in case.
No, self-guided.
On the walking tour, you would have a leader?
No, 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 it would be a self-guided walking tour.
With a map?
With a map.
Okay, and where do you pick the maps up at the?
We used to have them at
Community Center, maybe?
Community Center, we used to City Hall, we could have them. And also have them available online as well.
Lovely, okay, thank you. That would be lovely.
Okay, research, yeah, Los Altos art sites, I think that's still ongoing. We, we've done it and it is ongoing, especially if we end up with magnify moving it to South Los Altos. Discuss potential relocation of artworks. I think we're probably going to take that off. What do you think, John?
It's up to the commission.
We, we've discussed moving Mother Hen slightly. Maybe keep it on, keep it as ongoing.
All right.
Yeah, only because we haven't quite gotten all those done.
Yeah, so we, and I suspect we will discuss that, that's something we'll discuss often. The next one is explore the creation of an art for sale program. I think we're probably going to table that one. The idea was that if we had calls for art and we brought the artwork into the city, now the stuff that's on loan is for sale, but that we helped try to get the word out that that items were for sale. And I don't think that's really our job. And maybe we do, you know, need to tell people that things they see they can buy, but that's not, I don't think that's our job, so let's table it. Art conservation stewardship, website updated with new sculpture information and pricing for loaned art. I don't know if it's appropriate, first step, the pricing, but actually I was going to touch on when we get to the end of our meeting that the webpages do need to be updated to include our new sculptures. So that should just stay there, but maybe take price, pricing out, John, for it's probably not appropriate for us to do that. Work with staff to manage loan sculpture insurance and loan period extensions. I think that's kind of ongoing. We should probably get a database and make sure that we know what the the current values We should probably get a database and make sure that we know what the, the current values of some of the pieces that are owned by the city, or all the pieces owned by the city. So keep that as ongoing, floor restoration possibilities for various city-owned artworks ongoing, I think that's right. Monitor recommend and document actions for loaned and city-owned outdoor sculptures, I think that should continue to be ongoing. Okay, updated on the loan agreement. So best practices of other cities, we need to look at included verbiage specifying the additional stipend, maybe pay. I don't think we, we decided, actually, that should come off, because we had previously decided that we didn't want to pay an extra stipend if, we extended a loan, so. So here's one artist needs to prove, provide proof of insurance through the lifetime of the loan of, of the piece of art, so we have pieces that have been on loan for quite some time, and the city should make sure that, that the artist is still insuring it. And I, I know that this was one, when Anita heard this one, she was not pleased, because it does open the city up to liability, so yeah, we do need to look into that. Updates status of expired loan sculptures is early 2022, that's now. Maybe next meeting, John, we should look at, get a list again of what's expired or is about to expire, just so. Update report and commission, update and slash report on commission work plan status. I don't know what that is.
That seems like that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I guess that means just keep doing this.
I, I don't know that that needs to be on the, the work plan.
No, no, like. You know, look at work plan occasionally, okay, it's always, it should always be ongoing by every commission. Install community center interior and exterior artworks per approved public art plan, let's take that off. Community center murals signage should be completed. Identify and purchase art hanging system completed. Is, is the, the murals have their signage up, correct, in the community center, John?
I'm gonna have to double check, I know that, I, I think the signage was approved, I'll have to double check to see if it was actually installed yet.
Okay, I haven't been inside the community center for a little while, and I noticed you didn't yellow it. Community center art gallery completed and complete two calls, so that is ongoing or happening, so we'll keep that there. The mirror, so. When Linda Gass gave us a, just a presentation about the mural that she was designing, it was beyond fantastic, and we thought it would be great if she created a video describing the murals, and I believe the commission decided that we would spend up, up to five thousand dollars creating a, a video. And we got agreement from Parks and Rec, they have a TV in the community center to present it, and we've not gotten a, a bid from Linda about it, and it's kind of fallen into the cracks. I mean, we can keep it on the work plan, I just don't know if it's going to happen, or if we should pursue it at this time. And it's kind of hard for commissioners who are newer, because they did not see the presentation that we got to see, it was, really great, but let's, let's keep it there for now, and we can revisit it. Okay, commission program signage, so that I. Commission program signage, oh, maybe getting, making sure that all the sculptures have signs. I'm gonna assume in progress, relocation installation of Dancing Man and Conversation piece are done. The tower done. Art for the city council chamber, which I think Terry was asking for, so. Let's put that as an ongoing, because we're not sure when the city council chamber is going to be completed. And, and maybe we want to put some permanent pieces in, or do community calls for art, we're not sure yet. And I think that is it, John? Any comments on that before we go any further? Oh, Anita, your hand is up?
Hi, just a heads up, thank you, when speaking now as a council member, when we get these presented to us, one of the things that's often asked is, what is the next thing that will happen under, and we'll tend to pick one or two or three of the items, that seem a little, well, just to say, how will you know a year from now if you were successful at what you did? What you plan to do, and, and some of these are a little loosey-goosey for, for good reason. But on the other hand, if I were to ask each of you, you know, pick one of those and say, what's the next thing that's supposed to happen on that? Who's responsible, and when's it gonna be done? Could you do that? Could you answer that question? And so I'd encourage you, which you might necessarily, not necessarily have this done before you have our meeting, but you might want to think about what the answer to that question would be, and whether you want to go basically one level deeper for your own purposes of identifying what are next steps in a number of these, and when do you think you could do them, it would help balance your workload during the course of the year. I know you, you, you pay a lot of really good attention to not overloading the staff or yourselves, but you seem to do it on an ad hoc basis. And I'll stop there.
John, do we have any informational items from city staff?
I do not this evening, other than the, what I commented earlier regarding the sculpture installations. I don't have any other informational items.
Under commissioners' reports and comments, this is where I can comment on something not on the agenda, correct?
Yeah, so you can report out on something and or request a future agenda item if you like it this time.
Okay, I would like to request an agenda item to update the, Los Altos Public Arts Commission webpage. And do any other commissioners have any other items they would like to report on or comment on?
Do we want to have as an agenda item, a plan for what we're gonna do when we staff a table at Farmer's Market?
Or would that be a subcommittee report?
It could be, yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Anita?
You, did you, I'm sorry, do you have a subcommittee for that purpose?
We do not. You're right.
There's a public outreach subcommittee.
Yeah, I, I was gonna jump in and, and suggest having it as a future agenda item to either discuss or to create a specific Farmer's Market outreach subcommittee, so we can put that on for the next meeting.
Right, right.
And then I just want to congratulate you on the two new sculptures that are in town, because they're great. And thank John for getting ahold of the crier, so that they would come out and do pictures, and how great to have that on the front page. Totally, totally amazing. And this is a query for John, I'm jumping ahead on the, the website. We have, or, or who has been the person who took pictures of sculptures to put on the website?
That is a fantastic question, and the answer is a number of people. I know I've done some, we had a photographer who went out years ago and took pictures of some. I know some other staff members have taken pictures. And so, you know, it's, it's sort of, a smorgasbord of photographers, so to speak.
Because I'm, I'm sensitive, as you know, about not asking staff to do too many things right now because of our staffing situation. So I didn't know if we had the resources available to us within the commission, or if I should sign up my husband.
I just want to let you know that I took pictures of, multiple pictures of both, and I sent John one of each that I thought were the best. So I've been doing that already, at least since I started.
And we, we'll need a picture of the tower, which is also not on our webpage. Terry, do you?
Yeah, I have lots of pictures of the tower. Yeah, I, I just didn't send one to him, because I thought somebody else did, because there were so many people there, but I, I'm happy to do that.
So. Then city staff is spread very thin. Is it all right for me to ask Terry, would, would you like to be our official photographer? We have a lot more sculptures coming in, so.
Yeah, I can be, if you requested, I can do it.
Unless another member of the commission would like to be a photographer for the commission.
I could work. We could work to, oh, okay, go ahead. Perfect.
But I, I mean, I'm, Terry, to, if you need help.
Because John sends us an email and tells us when it's gonna be installed, and, you know, just from the last one, we go multiple times checking to see how the process is going, and when the artist is gonna be completed. You know, between two and eight hours, the tower took, what, ten hours? So.
So the, the photos for the website would definitely be after the installation is complete, hopefully with no people around, so it's just the artwork.
No problem, I can redo those.
Anita?
Yeah. No, no, I'm sorry, it was up from before.
Oh, okay, I, I apologize.
Yeah, I just, I, I didn't know, you know, what resources were out there, and, you know, we want good quality things, and if you're gonna use them for like the, the map, they're gonna be part of the, the, the map thing that you're gonna do for the walking tour, and so on, then we'd want, you know, good tiny pictures and good big pictures, and so on.
And they have to be with the good exposure and the correct time of day, so they get the good sun, et cetera.
Exactly. Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, Terry, in your day job, you do take photos to, try and sell homes, correct? So you're, you have awareness of what a good photo should look like to get someone to hopefully buy a home.
If John doesn't like my photos, I'm sure he'll tell me.
If Terry gets stuck, I'll volunteer my husband. Who, let's see if I can do this. That's one. Something he did once upon a time.
So I, I had a question, Mary Nander, it sounds like your husband not only is willing, thanks to you, but also is highly capable, does he want to do this? I mean.
No, no, I haven't, I haven't even talked with him about it, but, you know, we've been married forty-four years, and so I can volun, I know where I can volunteer him. And so the matter of, you know, we have, at least a dozen cameras and probably forty lenses, we can take a picture of anything, anywhere, in any format. So we don't need that level of stuff most of the time, but if there is something where we need something, and we're not getting what we need, you know, let me know, and I'll fetch him out there to do it.
So I don't know if we can.
Terry's right, and Terry has a sense of, of sun, and that was obvious when she was talking about the installation on the Serengeti. You know, that having the sense of where the light is matters so much when you're doing the picture, and she obviously understands and knows that, so. It's just, it may be between Terry and me, you know, Terry, if you get stuck up.
We'll call on, Jen and I will call on you and Anita when we need you, and then you can have your husband come out.
You, you know what, I am, if, if it's okay, I'll pull myself out of the equation, because I think Anita should be your backup, not me. I have a camera, but I'm not, I cannot call myself a professional photographer, so, so yeah, so Terry, why, if you want, just.
Yes, ma'am. I got it.
His first love is figure photography in the wild, but we can't show that in public.
And, and I think that most of.
Unless we get a sculpture that works for that.
Yeah.
And, and I would say most likely that is not probably the type of sculpture that we would recommend the city of Los Altos. Get on loan or purchase, so.
But obviously, landscape is something else he loves, so.
Yeah, that was clear, that was Hapdom.
Yeah, that was, that was a lucky, that was a lucky, I'll cap, capture, we were in Yosemite one year at Thanksgiving, and we woke up to unexpected snow. And like, oh, gotta, gotta.
What is this four-letter word, snow, you mentioned? It makes me cold.
I think we should ask John about that, because I suspect that one of the reasons that the, his screen was slow loading is that he may not be on home-high bandwidth.
He did say he was somewhere that, I think he said it was either snowing or very cold, so.
I think he said cold, but.
It's actually, it is, it is winter.
Well, that would be all of our hemisphere, would it not?
Well, it was, it was thirty-one degrees here this morning, John, so it's winter here, too.
Well, it has not gotten that warm here.
Where are you? You're not telling?
I am in the mountains.
On the mountain.
But he is still on this call, that's the important thing, he is here to help us. On that note, so, so Terry, you have volunteered to take pictures of pieces. And, and actually, Terry, I, I, and John will stop me if I'm not allowed to say this, but I would invite you to look at the pictures on the webpage.
I will.
Of our, of our sculptures, I know some of them in the past have been a little on the dark side, you know, the, the sun was not in the right place. And you might decide that it's time.
Okay, that's fine.
Where the sun is everywhere in this town at any time of the day.
Pretty much.
I know where it is right now, it's not in the sky right now. That much I know, okay. Potential future agenda items, I think we've touched on a bunch of items for the future. Does anyone else have any other suggestions for future agenda items?
I, may I, I just have an idea that when we have this brochure with the art pieces and so on, maybe we could have someone, an artist who knows about art and have, have a walk with people. You know, schedule a walk, art walk through town, and explain the sculptures, or it would be nice. To give.
We could put that as part of the creating a walking bike tour.
Right, to put incorporated as.
It's not just a self-guided, but maybe.
Right.
Schedule a, an in-person.
Right, and then maybe we could have a little refreshments or something, make it a real fun occasion of, you know. And maybe we could look at the poetry besides that, you know.
I think we definitely would need to, to know that, that COVID.
Oh, yeah.
It, it, it may always be with us, but that people feel comfortable.
Right, 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 we're looking into the future. Into the healthy future.
All right, and, and speaking of looking into the future, I'm looking at my clock, and it says seven eleven. I, unless we have any other future agenda items, which I do not think we have, I don't see anyone commenting. I'm going to say it is time to adjourn, and let John get back to his. balmy. Was it like 10 degrees, 15 degrees, whatever it is and and we will.